Good afternoon, welcome. I hope everybody is able to hear us at home. And we're going to move right into our agenda. This is the third of the special library workshops that we've had. Normally, we would have had what I'm going to next ask Alex Armentraut to do. We would have had on our Monday night's agenda for the Select Board, which had to be canceled due to the weather, which is the reason why we're meeting at 1:00 in the afternoon instead of 7:00 tonight because of the weather. So with that, and as I stated before we went live, we are going to be taking some questions and comments related to Mr. Armentraut's presentation immediately after. So with that, Mr. Armentraut, Mr. Gibbons?
Good afternoon. Is that Jeff? Am I close enough now to the mic?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Perfect.
All right. As just mentioned, my name is Alex Armentraut. While the Select Board and most others here in the room know me, there might be some who are watching this who do not know me. I came to Maine in 1965, moved to Rockport in 1973, and have been here most of the time since then and consistently since 1999. In that time, I've served on various town boards and worked with others that I was not officially a member of. While I have not been prominent in the discussion of the library project, I have followed the subject closely. I've been asked by a local citizen group to make this presentation. As the Select Board is aware, a group of community-minded local citizens has been working together to move the Rockport Library Project forward. We believe that a community-based project such as we are proposing has the best chance of gaining voter approval. This group's timetable has been designed to fit in to the Select Board's schedule of discussion of the way forward for the library, and the group plans to work with the Select Board to bring the project to a vote, hopefully on the June 2017 ballot. While this presentation was to take place after certain decisions had been reached beforehand, the weather has interfered and time constraints require that we move forward. It is important to note that all work done by the community group on this project is to be provided to the town pro bono. That includes architects, engineers, site planners, and other skills required to produce a proposal for the June ballot. With our attorney, the group has negotiated a contract on the Scott property, 3 Lime Rock Street, enabling it to be purchased to become part of the One Lime Rock Library Site. That contract is for six months, ending on or about the 1st of August 2017. The goal is to raise all funds required for this purchase privately. While this may not prove possible, a good start has been made toward this goal. Obviously, if all funds are not raised privately, public funds would be required to complete the purchase. We do not expect that to happen. The effort to obtain the contract on the Scott property has been led by Nick Ruffin. Had this meeting taken place on Monday as planned, he would have been here to speak for himself. Since he had commitments taking him out of town, I will read a message that he has left with me on the reasons for his leadership in this project. He starts out by introducing himself and saying, "My wife Holly and I have a home on 3 Ship Street in Rockport. We are neighbors of the Chapmans. Holly and I first came to Rockport to be with her father and stepmother, Paul and Eleanor Boyd. When people ask me why I decided to become involved with the new library, I say that in part it was the influence of Paul and Eleanor, is what they would have done if they were still here. When our dogs are here, I take them on walks, and one of our regular routes is to walk through the center of the village. We go by the library and Memorial Park several times a week. We go up Lime Rock or out Russell to make a loop. I know the corner well. The new library should be there. With the Opera House down the street, Linda Lesher's reading room, and the possibility of exhibits and other events at the restored barn that had been the CMCA, this is the cultural center of Rockport." And again, he would have said, "I'm here to talk about the property at 3 Lime Rock, which abuts the current library site. Last summer, when I heard concerns from Rockport residents about parking and the footprint of the proposed building, forced by the shape of the One Lime Rock Site, there seemed to be no convincing resolution to these issues until I heard in late July that the Scott property might be for sale. 3 Lime Rock Street, the Scott property, is 7,362 square feet in area. Though it is a small lot, it would increase the size of the library site by roughly 50% if you subtract the buffer for the stream. Last summer, the library proposal was too far along toward a vote to consider 3 Lime Rock, so most people involved in the project did not want to talk about it. My thought was that it was still worth talking to the Scots because 3 Lime Rock could have become part of the plan after the November vote. Last August, I emailed one of the Scots to ask them if the family was interested in selling the house. I told them why I was interested, that the purchase would require fundraising and agreement from the Select Board and the voters. I said that none of this was certain and that it would take time. I expected the ballot measure in November to be approved. When it wasn't, the idea of acquiring the Scott property took on new life. People in Rockport began asking me about where the discussion with the Scots stood. In December, following our first face-to-face meeting, the Scots asked me to discuss a transaction with their attorney, Mark Corsi. At that point, I called Paul Gibbons to contact the Scots attorney, and negotiations began. As of a week ago, this was written on the, well, it's a little more than a week ago now, but roughly a week ago, there was a contract in place to purchase the property." The attorney in question, Mr. Gibbons, will tell us some of the details of that contract.
Okay, you know, Paul Gibbons, Attorney in Camden, I represent Nick Ruffin, and we have now a contract with Joanne Scott to buy the property next to the library. That's for six months period. The price is $457,000. It's $457,000, which just happens to be the Rockport assessed value of that property. And that's how we came to that number. It is a six-months contract, which means that after six months, we don't have a contract anymore, which means time is chasing us. We intend to, our intention is to raise this money to buy the property, but of course, we cannot really raise money until we know, we have a commitment from the town that the town's going to go to this site and go about this process. You will note that in the agreement, it makes reference in parentheses to a drawing by Steve Smith Architects. We did that to show Joanne Scott why we were interested in buying the property. And it wasn't just for a parking lot, it was just so that also that we could expand the building and make it less than a three-story building and redesign the building. One of my clients' concerns, a very serious concern, was they thought that if something wasn't done soon, that this library project could crumble like an old ruin. And so they wanted to do something that had more universal appeal. And so we believe that this project will result in a library that's a smaller size, which means it will cost less. It results in people participating to the extent of $457,000, hopefully, in buying the property next door to make this project fit better into the neighborhood and to provide parking. And once the voters see this kind of participation, I believe it will be more attractive to them because it'll be less expensive, and they'll see the participation of donors. Also, I have been practicing law, municipal law, for over 40 years. And one thing I've learned with respects to large projects for municipalities is this: It is important, if you can, to hire local experts like contractors, or engineers, or architects. The reason it's important is this: Unlike people from outside of town, those people cannot afford to fail because they're part of the community. Their business will be in the front page of the paper. More importantly, they tend to look at these projects as a community effort, and they tend to look more about giving more than they normally would because they see this project, their project, as being something that they're giving to the town that'll last forever. So you, normally, when you have local experts like engineers and architects and contractors, it's like having an additional performance bond. You'll find that they're always, always on time, the projects are always usually on budget or under budget, and the quality of their work is amazing because they want to make that contribution to the community. Those type of aspects do not exist for people outside the community. I think if you look at the Rockport Town Office and the building down at Marine Park, you'll see that those are examples of buildings where local architects and local contractors were building those projects, and they worked out just handsomely. And one of our proposals here is that we're trying to, if this project goes through the way we suggest it would, that the voters would also know there'll be about $50,000 to $60,000 worth of expertise by local people, local experts, and won't cost them anything. So there'll be that contribution by local people and the contribution for the purchase of the property next door. And we think that those, and the smaller library and the smaller costs, will make it extremely attractive. The problem is, we need to get this done quickly, we need to get the money raised, we need to get this done in time for the June town meeting. If you have any questions, let me know. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. As Paul has already alluded to, a team of local architects and engineers stands ready to prepare, at no cost to the town, design drawings for a smaller library less costly than the proposal voted on last November. This team awaits direction from the Select Board as to the parameters of this building. We believe that there is serious value in a community-based project with regard to the enthusiasm that it will generate, the fundraising support that is then likely, and for approval at the ballot box. Yet, it is planned that the work to be done by this team will take advantage of that already done by Reed &amp; Company, the Library Committee, Ben Blackman, the Ad Hoc Library Committee. This group will not attempt to reinvent this project. We anticipate that the Select Board and the community will support a project of slightly less than $3 million. That's a discussion that I've had with a number of people on that subject. We believe that community support will be forthcoming for a building that fits well on the One Lime Rock Street Site, and most importantly, that has curb appeal. It's easier for voters to vote in favor of something they find exciting. To reiterate, this work as outlined will be done by a team of local professionals pro bono. Of course, once the project is approved by the voters and moves forward toward builders' drawings, that work of necessity would be done by one firm and would need to be paid for. We ask for the support of the Select Board for this plan, for acceptance of the purchase of the Scott property by the town for use for the library, and acceptance of the pro bono design work by the team of local architects and engineers working with the Select Board such that this project is enabled to be placed on the June 2017 ballot. That, gentlemen, is all I have to say.
Alex, could I ask you to just read that "ask" again, just one more time?
The last paragraph?
Yeah, you said "we ask."
We ask for the support of the Select Board for this plan, for, I'm going to give you a copy of this document, by the way, for acceptance of the purchase of the Scott property by the town for use for the library, and acceptance of the pro bono design work by the team of local architects and engineers working with the Select Board such that this project is enabled to be placed on the June 2017 ballot.
I'm also going to pass out to you the contract that we have, so you'll have it.
Okay.
Ken, do you have a question?
A couple of questions. Can I ask, if you can, for a little more detail on the scope of the work, as you call "design work" for pro bono, you know, what will that include and how far along in the project will that include? And you alluded to the fact that obviously after a project is approved, there would be some more, a single firm would need to be selected. So I guess it would be nice for us to know, how far along in the design process would the pro bono work take us?
Essentially, it would take us up to the point where the project is on the ballot. In other words, there'd have to be interior layouts, elevations, parking proposals, et cetera, as well as the engineering work that would be necessary as part of that.
So would it be fair to say then that the work would be as far as we got with Reed and Company prior to the last ballot?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes. That would be a very good analogy.
And then the other question I have is, in your "ask," you asked us to accept, to consider accepting the gift of the property for use as a library?
Right.
Or as part of the library project. My concern with that would be, what kind of deed restriction would be placed on the property? And if Paul wants to answer that, that'd be terrific.
Let the legal lawyer answer that one.
What I'm going, what my intention is, is simply, once we raise the money, separate account, is to sign our agreement to the town, and the town can buy the property. And in our agreement, there's nothing restrictive about what's happening. So you'd have, what we do is actually the town would get this contract, and the deed would go from the Scots directly to the town.
Without a restriction on the use of the property?
No, no restriction on the use of the property.
I mean, obviously, in this case, we would be accepting the property for use of the library, but given our current experience...
No, there's no restriction.
I would be loath to saddle a future select, who knows what's going to happen in 75 years or something like that.
Oh, yeah, but we have to be able to tell our donors it's going to be used for the library.
Right, and I understand that, and I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
There's not going to be any restrictions like there is now on the property.
Right, okay, thank you.
I want to make one, you know, one point clear here. We won't be making a decision today.
We understand that.
And we will be holding, weather permitting, a sort of a wrap-up workshop on the 21st, and my hope is that when we meet for our standard Select Board meeting on the 27th, Monday, the 27th, that we will be able to reach a decision at that point. That is just, you know, typically the way we have been working. We've, you know, heard from a lot of people, and we need to mull through all of that and go back through, make sure we understand everything before we come to making a decision.
I understand completely what you're saying. Our, the original schedule had been, hope that would happen on the 21st, but your schedule, you've got to do what you, what you need to do.
Any other questions here?
Yeah, I mean, this may be answered when I, when I see the wording, but Ken, you referred to the word "gift." I'm not sure that I, that I understand the actual sequence of transactions. So the property would be purchased by a group of private individuals with the only if there is a commitment from the town to purchase from that group of individuals that is arrived at in advance? Do I understand correctly?
No, I think, the first problem we have is, as a practical matter, we could not really raise money until we know the projects going forward, that you're going to pick Lime Rock Street to be with the library.
I understand that.
That's first. The second thing is for tax reasons, and for the towns, make it easier for the town. What we're going to do is raise the money ourselves to buy it, and then we're going to sign the contract to the town along with the donations of $457,000 so the town can buy the property. So the town, so there'll be a transaction from the Scots directly to the town. If we did it differently, there'd be some tax issues that we have to deal with. We don't want to do that.
Is that clear, Ben, now?
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
Okay, all right. No, I'm not right now.
Okay. Thank you. As I said, that if anyone wishes to make comment on this...
You guys might actually want to stay there for a second in case there are questions rather than comments. Alex?
Yeah.
Hey, Alex, want to pass this up to you?
Yeah, so if anyone wants to make comment or ask questions on this, I would ask you to please step up to the table so you could use one of the microphones, and then at the same time, would you be very, would you be brief and concise?
So the second is the contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the contract.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I will be brief and concise. I have two questions. My name is Ames Curtis. I live in West Rockport. Most of you know me from my many appearances at these hearings. My first question is, who exactly are the architects and engineers that have agreed to volunteer their time?
Yes, sir.
Are you able to answer that question?
Yes, I just gave her the list.
Oh.
Well, I think people who are watching my live stream should hear exactly who.
Would you, would you sit down?
Before you, got to get to the mic.
Consists of the following individuals: Will Gartley as engineer, the following group of architects, Maisy Cox, Brinkthorn, Justin Smith, Jeff James, and Stephen Smith; builders, Alan Mitchell and Tom Albertson; library consultants, Ben Blackman, obviously, Evelyn Greenlaw, Terry Dewan; and then we've got fundraisers and advisors, but that's the professional group.
Okay, thank you. My second question is this: If the group of donors intend to purchase that property for $457,000, and you're proposing a smaller library, even though we know already it's been reduced in size to be less than ideal for what we want for a library, so now we're going to reduce it in size, and those donors are going to give $457,000, does that mean that they're also prepared to donate to the 3-plus million or around 3 million for the building of the library, or do they consider that their donation, and the remainder would again be looked, they'd be looking to other members of the community to add to that?
I think you'd have to ask them. I don't think anybody in this room could answer that question now.
But I think that's an important question. I want to put it out there.
Valid question, yep. Anyone else?
Joe Sternowski from Rockport, a member of the Ad Hoc Library Committee. Just a question of clarification. So if we selected this group to go forward with the design, in the Reed process, we actually went out to competitive bid to construction companies. Would we plan on doing the same thing here, or would we be committed just to one construction company?
I can't imagine that the town would contract to have a building built without putting it out to bid.
Okay, so it would be, it would be...
There's no, if you will, stipulation here that, that once it gets to the point of going to the ballot, that anybody, any engineering and build and construction work would be done other than on a bid.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, did that actually answer your question?
I think it did because I was just not certain as to whether this group that was going to do this work, if we agreed to have them do the initial work, if they would then be bound, at least from the view of the committee, to go forward and do all of the construction work also. But I think I heard that they would not be. It would be competitive.
The town's, and Rick can step in here, the town's purchasing policy would require, I think...
I would think so, okay. Just wanted to make sure that was...
And in their list here, under the builders, they do indicate that the builders announced work for the construction budget, which I assume would be developing what the cost estimate would be.
Taking the costs off the preliminary design, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Come on up.
While she's coming up, I'll ask another question, and it's from Ames' question, and she referred to a smaller library. I'm assuming by the word "smaller," you're comparing with the proposal that was defeated at the ballot the last time and not with the fact that we've had discussions about downsizing in our meetings? So smaller is a comparison to the proposal that was on the ballot the last time?
Yes, and as I said in my presentation, this group is waiting for direction, the terms of building parameters from the Select Board.
The reason I ask the question is that among our discussions, we have talked about a smaller number, and we've asked Ben, and has presented a possibility of a smaller library, and I just wanted to make sure that what you were suggesting was not smaller than what we have been talking about after the ballot, but just in reflection.
To be perfectly honest with you, I don't know what you've been talking about.
You hurt my feelings.
Okay. I'm Helen Shaw from Rockport. I didn't catch all the list of names of people who are part of this community group, this design group, but I'm concerned that, that some members of that group may have been, have already submitted a design for the library which was rejected, and I don't think we need to beef. And I didn't hear all of the answer to the gentleman's question as to whether we would be required to use the design that this group develops. And I'm very disturbed by that possibility. I don't...
Well, I'd say two things about that. First of all, with respect to rejected or not rejected, there was only one architect's work who was accepted. So by definition, everybody else who submitted anything to the, to the town was rejected.
Right.
Though there were at least two possible designs that had, if I'm not mistaken, significant favor as far as the Ad Hoc Committee was concerned. The second point I would make is this, that the Select Board is not going to put a design on the ballot that they don't think is satisfactory. So, and the, and the point, that, one of the points that I made in my presentation was that this group intends to work very closely with the Select Board. So I don't think that the possible outcome that you're describing is likely.
We would not be putting something onto the ballot and then getting a positive vote, going and changing it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because what would go to the ballot is what we would be presenting as what would be developed.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're not being stuck into one absolute design.
By the time you get to the ballot, yes, you are.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Sally Cook, local resident, and you know my opinions about site. I fear that if this library site and size deadlock continues much longer, Rockport could lose its library altogether. Regarding the site, adding the Scotland and the One Lime, to the One Lime Rock Site resolves the contentious issues of parking and future expansion. Regarding the size, a dedicated group of local architects, engineers, and builders, giving their time and professional skills and working with the Select Board, with our local librarian and representatives from the Library Committee, while keeping a practical focus upon size and cost, could produce a design and plan both financially sound and functionally and aesthetically appealing. The result, enthusiastic voter approval of a project in June.
I would say one thing here. Ann Philly, the Chair of the Library Committee, was, is unable to be here today. Otherwise, we would have had somebody from the Library Committee present. Is Paul Charbonneau here?
Yes, he's in there.
Oh, there, ah, there is a representative. Can't see you back there, Paul. Okay. With that, is anybody else that wishes to make a little comment here? Oh, we do have someone.
I have some questions after.
Oh, okay.
Just after everybody else.
All right.
Hi, my name is Mary Anne Young, and I'm a Rockport resident. I just want you to think long and hard about the gift of the Scott House because it sounds wonderful as a gift, but it's actually tearing down an authentic Greek revival home on the green in our beautiful town. Since I've lived here, there has been, I think, five or six homes, right in my walking distance in the village, torn down. And when you leave a void like that for a parking lot, which that's what it probably will be, you leave a void of history, beauty, character of our town. I am shaken to my core that we're even thinking about tearing that house down. You know, we can't get back these beautiful homes or the character of our town once you ruin it. And I think you should be, really think long and hard as well about that there's a sanctuary in the back there that a lot of our homes surround that you're not aware of, and it's a wildlife area, a brook, and a flyway for birds. And now we're talking about trading a beautiful home for asphalt. I think you should be sensitive about that.
Thank you. Brendan, you indicated you had a couple more questions.
Yeah, so I think this, this builds on some of the questions that have already been raised, but I want to make sure that I understand exactly what is being asked of the Select Board in the concluding paragraph. You write, "Acceptance of the pro bono design work by the team of local architects and engineers," comma... work by the team of local architects and engineers, comma, working with the select board."
Yes.
What are we accepting exactly, if we were to?
In essence, what we're talking, it's, on the one hand, we're talking about, first of all, let's back up a bit.
There's process and product, and I'm, and I'm, and I, I'm not, I'm not trying to pin you down.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay. The first decision that the select board needs to make is, is where the library's going to go.
Understood.
If we assume, for argument's sake, for purposes of this conversation only, that the decision is made that the library will be at One Lime Rock Street, then the next decision is, okay, if the money is raised to buy this piece of property, or a good portion of it, or whatever, that the town will accept the contract on that property to add to the One Lime Rock Street site. That's the second part. The third part is that as a part of this whole package, that this group of local architects and engineers and so on will produce plans for a library to meet the param, the guidelines, the parameters set by the select board, which can then be put on the Dune ballot. Now, any or all of those choices, decisions, can be in some other direction, but that's what's being asked for here. Okay? Have I made, have I made it clear yet?
I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I'm getting at is if we did arrive at a conclusion that the site was the One Lime Rock site.
Right.
And the select board had arrived at a conclusion that it is advisable or responsible or whatever to, to try and add this property.
Right.
What are the follow-on requirements? Is there?
Well, there's a decision to be made at that point by the select board. Again, do they want to work with this group, local group, who's prepared to provide their work pro bono, or do you want to go in another direction?
So there is still, that's, you've answered the question. I was looking for whether or not that decision still exists.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Or Step B was predicated on accepting that, working with that group of individuals.
Ben, I've been around long enough, so that I'm not going to tell the select board what to do.
Fair enough.
It's that simple.
You can call him anything late but dinner, but his name is Brendan.
Sorry, I'm sorry. It's Brendan.
It's fine, Alex.
Did that answer all your questions?
That answered my questions for now, yeah.
Any more over here?
Add one thing.
Oh, yeah, we've got another person that wants to speak, but go ahead, Paul.
Well, I think the, the reason that my client is anxious to buy this is that they anticipate that the building will be partly on this property that we're buying.
The building, you mean the library?
Library.
What you're getting at is that it, they anticipate that it's not 100% parking.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm Judy Flock. I live on Lime Rock Street, next to Joanne Scott's property. This is all food for thought for you guys. Should you, as a select board, approve the Lime Rock location for the library, there is a concern for the use of the Scott property as a parking lot. When it is not clear, there is a real need for more parking spaces. We've been over that before. The removal of yet another historic property in the Rockport Village, and there have been four in the last 17-plus years that we've lived here, is a travesty. Sadly, the character of the harbor area changes with each demolition and cannot be returned. A parking lot is a poor replacement, and a detriment to the surrounding residential neighborhood, not to mention the additional construction costs, including site preparation, sound barriers, lighting, paving and landscaping, hours of usage. Money's better used in the construction of a new library.
I'd like to make just one comment about that. I don't disagree with, with anything that Judy has said in terms of the sanctity of historic buildings in the, in the town. We have a very good example of what she's talking about, that's recently encroached itself on Pascal Avenue. But the Scott property project has been brought to the fore in an effort to deal with what apparently a certain number of people in the town see as a problem with respect to the library being at One Lime Rock Street. Now, I don't happen to agree with that. I don't think the parking is a problem, but there are lots of people who do. And therefore, this group has taken the effort to deal with that problem, to make the One Lime Rock Street where some of us, myself included, believe the library should remain, a more viable site in the term, in, in the eyes of those who had objections to that site on the basis of parking. So I guess what it boils down to is, you can't have it both ways. Either the parking problem is a problem and is dealt with, or there isn't a problem and it's not dealt with.
Okay. Suddenly, we have more people. Come on up.
My name is Bob Baldwin. I live in the, in the town. And I'd like to just put a few numbers on, on the parking issue. As, as many of you know, and I've said before, I did a informal survey. I made 11 inspections, and after talking with the library, I asked when their busiest times were. I managed to do an inspection in every one of those busy times. Now, there are one, 59 or so sites that I could easily walk to within, I believe it was two minutes, where you can park. The, the main sites are three sites right in front of the library and three sites right alongside it. These are sites where you can park your car, get out, and step your foot on library property. Of those 11 inspections, never once, every one of those 11 inspections, there were always at least two of those six slots empty, every single time. Many times, there are only two in those six spots. Now, in addition to that, of course, there's a handicap site, which I didn't, which I didn't count. But even with only, always having two sites available right on the property, one of the vehicles that was parked there in 10 of the 11 times was a white car that was, that belongs to an employee of the Contemporary Arts Center. They parked there all day long. So without the Contemporary Arts Center there, there would have been half of those six sites in front of the library would have always been open. So I, I think that parking can be improved, but in my mind, after the survey, there is not a major parking problem.
Thank you. Come on up.
Yep.
Bill, after this one, you can assure people that we'll be talking about all this.
Yeah, okay.
My name, my name is Don Flock. I live at Five Ron Rock Street. And we're not double teaming you this afternoon, but in our family, only one does not get to speak to us. And I think that, that how you're planning to modify the Scott property will definitely be a degrading of the value of my property, because having a, a parking lot 16 feet from our property line, I mean, 16 feet from our bedroom windows, is not something terribly desirable. And since every morning when I fix my coffee and there's somebody, somewhere in our house on the front side all day long, I'm echoing what Bob Baldwin says. Never, I would say 98, 99% of the time, people do not build parking clear up in front of Rich Anderson's house. And for years, two employees of the, of the library parked right in front of our house, and it still didn't change a thing. I've always felt this whole thing that I think the older manes would be ashamed of us if they thought that they, someone was complaining about walking half a block to pick up a book. And the other thing is, I am definitely visually disturbed, because as Mary Ann said, that is a wonderful sanctuary back there. It's beautiful, the way the land drops off, and it does drop off quite steeply back there, down to the brook, which is just a treasure. I, I, I respect the setback of the brook, and I wish it were doubled, because people couldn't ruin it. And I would just like to pose a problem for every one of you, every single one of you, and everyone in this audience here, to go home when you get there, look at your property tonight, look at the sideline and say, hey, I'm going to have several thousand feet of blacktop right there the next day, and people are going to be coming and going all the time. So I think it's a travesty to use a property like that for a parking lot.
Given that we have moved along here, we need to move on and continue our discussions here. Of course, you know, if people want to make comment or send us emails, we'll be glad to take them, always are. But we do need to move on in consideration of the time. At this point, I'd like to introduce all of the rest of the speakers that we anticipate showing, talking to us today. First, there's Kerry Leichman, our town assessor. He's going to make a presentation. There's Jane from Friends of Mid Coast, Maine. No, that's not what you're called anymore, is it?
But, Mr. Chairman, why don't we, we'll have a very brief time where everyone can get up and just introduce themselves. Terry Dewan is on Skype.
Okay.
And then we have a particular order that we have to go in by virtue of people's schedule later in the day.
Oh, all right, that's fine.
That's, that's why that modified list.
Should we invite them up to the table?
So why didn't, why didn't everybody who's presenting come up to the table? We can switch on Terry onto the, under the monitor, and we'll do a quick bio.
There he is.
That'll be actually for you, and that'll be for Jamie when you need it, so. All right. So let's start with Jamie, since he's taken over the mind control of the.
We also need the magic track pad.
No, no, this is just introductions. This is just introductions, just introductions.
Jeff, do we also need a track pad to work?
You will get a track pad when it's your turn to, to show.
Thank you very much.
Okay, everybody wants to get out of here.
My name is Jamie Franco Mano. I've been working here as a town planner, community development director for two years, and this month marks 10 years in that general line of work with Belfast Presqueille, the Main Land Use Planning Commission, and my first job was at the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission in western Massachusetts. I'll, I'll offer my views on the library location, and make sure everyone's aware, I'm, I'm just another New Jersey refugee who is trying to avoid the patterns of growth that I grew up with.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jane LaFleur. I do not live in Rockport. I live in Camden. I have been a city and regional planner, town planner, since 1981. I have a master's degree in, in planning. And I most recently worked with Friends of Mid Coast Maine for 13 years, which is a regional smart growth organization. Since September, I've been working with Lift 360 in Portland and working from home in Camden. We work to build capacity through leadership development, organizational development, and community development. So I bring the community development piece to Lift 360. And I work with cities and towns all over Maine and all over the country.
I'm Kerry Leichman. I'm the town assessor. I've been that since 2009. Before that, and actually in conjunction with it, early on, I was on the planning board for 14 years. I served as its chairman for 12.
And then we'll switch to Terry, who's, who's hanging out in the safety of his office.
He's not on this screen.
Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
It's not on this.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, assuming that. My name is Terry Dewan. I'm a landscape architect in Yarmouth, Maine. I live in Gloucester, Maine, and I've been practicing landscape architects here here in Maine since 1973. As was mentioned earlier, we've been involved in developing an initial site plan for the property. We've been asked today to take a broader look at the ways that a town might go about making the decision about where the best place to locate a library might be, specifically to this situation here in Rockport.
And for the, for the members of the audience, because this is on a different switch, just imagine some answer guy in a red sweater. He's over there.
Okay. Then we're going to turn now to Kerry.
Okay. Do you want me to read my memo or just respond to questions?
We just got it a couple minutes ago, so.
Why don't I read it?
If you can hit the high points, that'd be great.
All right. I was asked to do a build-out on the RES site. That would include workforce housing, a multi-use retail property, and a professional office. So the first thing I did was I asked Scott Bigford about the zoning there, and he told me it was 15,000 square foot per dwelling. Scott said that he didn't think any of the parcel was unusable, even including the small stream on there. So now, I don't really have a definition for workforce housing, so I kind of made one up, and I, and I just assumed a modest structure, a little bit above what I think of as affordable housing in both the square footage and the construction quality, just a notch or two above that. And so rather than try to reinvent the wheel, I just went through my database and, and looked at recently built capes and ranches, took a selection of those until I felt comfortable with what was the middle ground there, and I used those as the models. And in every case, I attempted to be conservative in my numbers. So if anything, the numbers should be low, lower than what reality is. So anyway, I came up with a calculated average of $172,300 for the dwelling, for the building, the building itself. That's without a garage. With a garage, it'd be another $15,000 or $35,000. Each dwelling being on a 15,000 square foot lot whose land value is $50,800, it gives us an average assessment per developed parcel of $223,100. So, okay, so that takes care of the residential aspect of it. For the commercial, I was asked to include a building on there that could house two or three different small businesses and a professional office. So I, I looked all around both Rockport and Camden and decided on the Hewings Travel Consignment Shop Building, that's across from Rite Aid, because it's attractive, it holds two businesses, probably could hold three if they wanted to. It's, it's fairly modest, so I used that one, again, hoping to be conservative. But I, in the package there, I gave you a spreadsheet, and I put a few other commercial businesses in there so you could look and make your own decisions as to what's appropriate. And then I went to Oakland Park, which is across from Penn Bay, and I took one of the smaller buildings there and used that as a model for a professional building. Now, in each case, what I did was I took the depreciation off, because we're going to be building new there, so the values I came up with is as new as newly built buildings. So, okay, so I put each of the professional buildings on a half an acre, which is 21,780 square feet, and then I put the dwellings on 15,000 square feet. And I came up with 15 dwellings and the two commercial buildings, which used 6.17 of the total 7.67 acres, leaving an acre and a half for roads and green space and that sort of thing. And I came up with a total taxable value of $3,957,804, which at today's mill rate of 1461, would produce tax revenues of $57,823.52. Now, just to provide you some context, I, I took the acreage and just divided it by 15,000 and put, and that allowed 22 dwellings on there. And that's not practical, but I just wanted to give you the gross number. And that came out to $4,908,200 in value. So anyway, so, and then in, in the package, I also gave you a few extra property record cards for less modest houses, but still probably something that would be appropriate to there. There, there, one is a colonial with a attached garage, and the other is a cape with an attached garage and an addition. So just a little bit more built out than the ranch and the cape I used for the rest of it.
Do we have questions? Kerry?
So this is, this is just totally an abstract.
Totally.
It's what could happen there. And it's just part of the information that we have.
That's it.
Okay.
Just straightforward.
Okay.
Just straightforward.
Should we ask the question about what could happen at one Lime Rock Street as well?
Well, it's pretty simple. It really depends on what kind of building. I mean, you can do the same exercise. I just, I should have looked up for you what the assessed value of that acreage is. But then you can take any building, anything that I gave you here or anything else, and, you know, what's going to be there? And take that value, and it's not too hard to calculate, but it really depends. Brendan had asked me that, and I guess I needed more direction because I could put any building there, you know, anything that would fit on that lot. It really depends on what we're looking at. I mean, we're talking about putting on a brand-new colonial or what, you know? I don't know.
Its own commercial and residential.
Yeah, right.
Well, I think in the process that you've used to do the RES, I think basically you've made some assumptions about what could fit on the property, how it could be developed. I don't know if the same exercise could be done for the one Lime Rock property and...
I mean, we have an adjacent property that we just learned an assessed value. I mean, an immediately adjacent property at $450,000. I mean, is that not an appropriate ballpark?
It is. Very much so. And that was something I, in my mind, I was going to think about, just take the Scott House and put it on that property, because it's typical of a downtown residential property. Yeah, anyway, Brendan, I agree with that.
Yeah, the lot, though, is twice the size and...
So call it two.
But it's, tell me if I'm wrong, it's the house that's going to drive that because it's the first, the first buildable acre, and then you're going to have about three square feet left over.
Right. And I believe...
25 years ago, I remember this.
Well, that for nothing, right? And I believe the zoning only allows one building on there. It might allow two, so, but I think it's only one.
Okay.
I could subdivide it.
Could you?
It's in the commercial district. It's buildable lot line to lot line based on the downtown.
I'll be happy to do that for you. It wouldn't take very long at all.
It'd be another good piece of information for us to have, I think, unless the rest of the board disagrees.
Something that would be good to have.
Okay, we'll do that.
Information is good.
And now we're going to turn to Jane and Terry. Have you two flipped a coin to see who goes first?
Well, Terry has to be off by three.
Okay.
If Jane promises to go through hers quickly, then she gets the trackpad and her mouse and/or you have the keyboards.
I do. Can you?
Let's put yours up.
As long as you can put mine up.
Switch me to, put me in the computer now.
So I have a bunch of slides just to...
That's you?
That's me, yeah.
That's you.
The slideshow. Okay. So thank you for inviting me to share with you some professional planning principles. That's what I was asked to do. You've seen this map before, and one of the things that planners do is to look at the location in view of the layout and the development patterns that are already existing in your community. And I think I can do this. Let me make sure.
Just the arrow down, yeah.
Okay. So planners also ask, well, first of all, here are the sites, obviously, and you can see the different types of development patterns. That means streets and buildings that are located around those existing sites. I'm also asking you as a planner to consider these characteristics: the location of the property, the walkability, the economics, the placement and form of any building, no matter where you choose to put it, and of course, the future. And that's what I'm sure is most important in your mind. So location matters. Rockport Village is one of the five villages in your town. It shows a very traditional pattern of growth: multi-story buildings located close to the road, shared public spaces for streetcars, in this case, for automobiles, and for pedestrians. The public space that is created between the front walls of the buildings along the street and the opposite side of the street is often called our outdoor room. And more and more communities are finding interesting and creative ways to use this outdoor room to improve the quality of life in their communities, and in turn, improving the economic health of the communities. This image from the Prenob Scott Marine Museum is the site of the public library now, showing a history of commercial, multi-story uses on this site. So if you think about build-out, that might be one potential option, and that is very dense, property line to property line build-out. Here's the approach to the village library site, showing denser, village-like placement of buildings, pedestrian spaces, et cetera. And on-street parking gives a village, a village-like feel, with people slowing down to make way for each other. Again, here's another look at the village, albeit it's missing a few teeth right now. And those are missing gaps in the village-like form. And around the corner, we have denser, tighter village uses, multi-stories, mixed-use structures, and over time, these types of commercial spaces are adaptable to many types of uses, like startup businesses, small mom-and-pop buildings, businesses, and many other small businesses. And then here's your library site, and we also have other civic uses a bit further out from the village center. In contrast, the RES site is about a half a mile from the village center and adjacent to a commercial corridor. A sidewalk along the front of this site allows for some pedestrian access, but as you can remember from the first slides, there are few residential uses or residential neighborhoods immediately adjacent to this site, and it's most likely that people will drive to this site. The intersection is a major intersection, mostly for left turns from Route 90 onto Route 1 going north. Walkability matters. Planners and placemakers talk about a five-minute walk as the best size for neighborhoods or approximately a quarter of a mile. Now, many people walk more than that for pleasure or recreations and sometimes household trips, and ironically, we often walk much more than a quarter of a mile through a large parking lot or in shopping malls. Planners often talk about land efficiency when creating connected streets. Here's an example of what we would call the suburban sprawl type of development pattern versus a much more walkable community. And I think at this juncture, you have a decision between which kind of development pattern you want to continue. Jane Jacobs notes in The Life and Death of Great American Cities that places like libraries are often one of government's primary ways to direct and ensure that people are downtown at different times of the day, which is crucial to a good retail and commercial environment. She talks about the importance of development pressures pushing every inch of real estate towards the same highest and best use, and if we keep following that monotony, it's a great way to strangle the goose that lays the golden egg. And I want to talk about that goose that lays the golden egg. Why should we care about villages and downtowns? In our work with Friends of Midcoast Maine with Urban 3 LLC, and I think you've seen some of these slides before, we asked Joe Minicozzi to compare the village center to the downtown core to development on the outskirts. And although this is rockland, and I'm not suggesting that Rockport is anything like rock land, there are significant differences in the productivity of land. As an example that's replicated all over the country, suburban-type development or commercial strips produce what is, looks to be, fairly high assessed values. But in contrast, downtowns and village centers produce significantly more on a per-acre basis. There are higher assessed values and higher tax revenues. So when you compare our village centers, our moneymakers, compared to more or less dense development, the village centers are our cash cows. Downtowns and village properties generate much greater tax revenues and assessed values per acre than buildings on the outskirts. So our villages are our cash cows. It makes sense to do everything we can to support these revenue generators. In addition, they are what make our midcoast communities unique. They appeal to our residents and our visitors. More older people and younger people are looking for thriving downtowns and village centers with evening activity, housing above shops and coffee shops. Form matters. Form is where the buildings are placed on the lot. It means the height and scale of the building. How do you take a busy intersection like that at Route 1 and Route 90 and make it a place where people want to be? And this is a simulation of what might be Route 1 and Route 90. How might you transform that? Similarly, if you decide that the RES site is the best location for the library, I would hope you would maximize the future potential of that site. A single use on a single lot is a waste of land and ties your hands for decades. Alternatively, what if a building like this was built with library space on the lower floors? This kind of development gives places for people on foot, people in vehicles, and people on bikes. It maximizes lots and floor space. It offers different types of retail spaces that are flexible and can host a range of businesses, provide jobs and housing for people of all ages who might choose this lifestyle. Believe me, many of the millennial generation, our next generation of select men and women, are looking for this option. So in thinking about how you develop either site, think about these factors: enclosure. Define the space within buildings and, with buildings and trees, create an outdoor room. Transparency. You cannot have transparency when buildings are located far back from the edge. When buildings are located close to the street, people will walk along the street front. They will not just jump into their car. Where would you rather be of those photos? And then image ability: making places memorable so you know you're in Rockland, Maine, Rockport, Maine, excuse me. Giving the spaces life that breeds life into the community and then enhances the economic potential as well. Human scale: continuous active uses at the street level, not walls and open gaps. Where would you rather walk? So form matters. The sense of protection is strong. There'll be people on the street, and stores and libraries will invite you in. And don't forget to build that outdoor room. Complexity is good. A block with one building is less complex than a block of several buildings. Libraries are essential parts of our communities. They help maintain the daily activity in our community. They produce synergy with other uses, and they bring vibrancy to the street. And they improve the economic health of your community. So where do you want to invest? What kind of, what area will create the kind of community that is economically strong? And what kind of future do you want to create? As Fred Kent from Project Republic Spaces says, "If you plan a town for cars and traffic, you'll get cars and traffic. If you plan for people and places, you'll get people and places." Thank you very much.
And we're going to go, excuse me, we're going to go right to Terry now, and then we can ask questions of both of them. So Jeff is setting this up.
Can we have the first slide, please?
We got it.
Drop me the door.
You're up, right?
Yes.
And you can see it, Terry?
I can only see me. I can't see the...
It's like Terry.
There we go.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for inviting me also, and I have not coordinated my presentation with Jane at all. Does this sound okay? I'm wearing headphones right now. I could take them off, it would sound better without them.
You sound fine.
You sound fine. Okay. So what I've taken a look at is the option between the two sites that are shown here as red dots on a modified version of the tax map. One is the RES site on the left, the current site on the right. And what I'd like to do is to walk through a process that we would go through in evaluating which would be the better site to look at for a proposed lighting, a library. Jane has talked about a lot of things that I was planning on talking about, so I'll skim through some of those. And one of the things I've been very interested in looking at is how other communities along the coast of Maine have dealt with the same situation. So if you have the next slide, please. I always like to start and ask the question, what does the comprehensive plan, even if it may be out of date, say about this issue? Back in 2004, the comprehensive plan took a look at the situation, and they said, realizing that the library back then, you know, a dozen years ago, had some issues, they said that going forward, the town ought to weigh the costs and benefits of, first of all, expanding the library building and creating more parking at its current historic location in Rockport. The present building is widely admired for its architecture and landscaping. Zoning and traffic issues will need to be addressed. So that was one option. Next slide, please. They also said, at the same time we do that, we also ought to evaluate constructing a new facility on one of Rockport's major routes. Now, at this point, the RES was still an active school site. And they made the observation that in a larger and more centrally-located, conveniently-accessible public space, Rockport residents could meet, interact, and build the bonds of community. So they laid out two very distinctive, clear choices that need to be evaluated, which I think is where we're at right now. Have the next slide, please. Now, just like Jane, I've looked through some resources. Several years ago, a scholar by the name of Christopher Alexander developed a 1,000-page book called A Pattern Language, and has a lot of advice to communities and individuals who are building things to help reinforce a sense of community. And he found that there are various patterns that we use to build our lives, to build our houses, to build our communities. And a couple of quotes I thought resonated very nicely here. Community facilities, such as libraries, town halls, post offices, and so forth, "Community facilities scattered individually through the city do nothing for the life of the city." And his encouragement is the gradual formation of a promenade or a walkway system at the heart of every community, linking the main activity nodes and placed centrally so each point in the community is within a 10-minute walk. And this 10-minute walking distance, I know Jane used a little bit smaller, but I think that's an important thing to keep in mind as we go about looking at the implications of locating the library. Can I have the next slide, please? I did a little bit of research, trying to find out what's the current thinking on library facility siting. I didn't really find an awful lot. I did purchase a book called Library Facility Siting and Location Handbook by Dr. Christine Coons. She's a researcher out of University of Florida, I believe. She took a look at a lot of current studies, a lot of current thinking, and this is back in 1995, and came to a lot of different conclusions. Some of these were things that Jane already talked about. The best library site has the following characteristics: it should be accessible by either private or public transportation. And she noted, back then, at least in very large urban areas, there was a distinctive shift from sitting libraries in places that were easily accessible on foot to libraries that are more accessible either by public transportation or by automobiles. She also felt that the visual quality of the facility is really key. And as Jane said, the prominence of the building plays in the community is really key to its understanding and its relationship to its surrounding. And lastly, the visibility of the facility are all, these are all important considerations. By that, they meant, how does the library facility relate to the open spaces around it? Is it seen as a prominent part of the community? Next slide, please. What does the zoning say about it? This is the zoning map for the village area. Can I have the next slide? There are, the existing library is in the Rockport downtown area. Whenever we start doing projects, we always like to ask the question, what is the purpose, what is the design intent of that particular zoning district? This is the downtown area, and the purpose is to preserve and enhance the mixture of small businesses, civic, educational, residential, and water-dependent development in the core of Rockport Harbor Village. This is at the head of the harbor. It's a slightly different color than the Harbor Village all around it. And it's important, I think, to recognize that they say to preserve and enhance all these various types of functions. Could I have the next slide? On the other hand, the RES site is in the modified mixed business and residential district, right on the border with the Harbor Village District. And its function, the objective, is to encourage commercial growth and residential uses in a setting that creates a village atmosphere. The village setting should encourage pedestrian traffic while slowing vehicular traffic down. Now, it's interesting also to look at the zoning map, and just to the north on West Street, there's a very large tract of land, which looks like it'd be a wonderful addition to the life of the community, except that it has those symbols on it that indicate this is primarily a wetland site. So I'll come back to that later on. Let's go on to the next slide. Population and future growth. Can I go to the next slide, please? One thing that we've taken into consideration is how many people live within a 10-minute walk of the library. And we started to do a count, but it's very difficult to do that. And we started to do a count, but it's very difficult to do that without spending an awful lot of time. We do have GIS capabilities, but this is the 10-minute walking circle around the existing RES site. Let's go to the next slide. And this is the existing population around the existing library site. Now, not counting individual homes or apartments, to me, it looks like it's about equal, and we can certainly debate that, but there certainly is not a clear favor, at least from these two slides, that one is more accessible to a greater number of residential units than the other. Click, please. Again, just comparing the two. And you can see that to walk from one site to the other is probably a five, well, it's probably more like a 10 minutes' walk. Let's go up to the next slide. And if you're really interested, this is what a GIS-based approach looks like. I won't get into that because it's much too complicated for this brief presentation. Next slide. What I also wondered, what are the precedents in other communities around coastal Maine? Knowing that we're looking at where the library is located right now, how does it relate to other functions? As Christopher Alexander said, what are the relationships between schools and downtowns and parks and roadways and so forth? Where is the library located relative to the commercial core? And what is the character of the land surrounding it? Next slide, please. So let's take a look at Bucksport, for example. You know, here's the downtown area. This is the 10-minute walking radius. You can see the schools to the north and northeast. The yellow area is roughly the commercial downtown area. Next slide, please. And there's a beautiful waterfront walkway and green that goes along the entire riverfront there. This is fairly typical of a lot of the libraries we've looked at. And I'll briefly go through some of the other ones. Next slide, please. Starting with Camden. Again, these are, I'm not saying these are ideal or typical, but this is just the way they are. In Camden, the library is located in the heart of downtown. When they want to do an expansion, they build an underground library, which is very unique. They have a beautiful outdoor sitting area that's right next to the Bach Amphitheater overlooking the harbor. The relationship between the library and the parks, I think, is really important. The library, of course, is a place of refuge, it's a quiet place. And places like this, that have a passive park next to it, I think is an ideal situation. It certainly is one of the hallmarks of downtown Camden. It's also central to circulation routes, major highways go right next to it. There's residential areas within an easy 10-minute walk. Newcastle and Damroskata, two separate communities share one library in Damroskata. As you can see, within the walking distance, there's a lot of people who live there, and certainly the downtown area is within a two- or three-minute walk of the library. There aren't any major open spaces, although there's a little courtyard next to the library. Next. If you look at Freeport, Freeport used to be in the downtown, just south of LL Beans, but they were lured by the money that could be made by selling their facility and using the proceeds to move north of the downtown area. An area that's primarily residential. In fact, you have to go through a residential neighborhood to get to it. This is, seems to be the anomaly in looking at how libraries have been cited recently. However, if you notice, just to the west of the library is a school, which was attractive in terms of its citing, but most of the schools now are to the west and to the south of the new location. Next. Looking at Lincolnville, this is not Lincoln, this is not by the coast, but the library is in a very rural situation. It's next to the school, just to the west. There's a large, beautiful park overlooking the lake right there. Jane's already had an image similar to this on rock land, but the library, of course, is right in the middle of the downtown area. It's right on the juncture between the commercial parts of Rockland and the residential areas, within easy walking distance of the downtown area. There's a school within a couple of blocks away. Next. Searsport, likewise, it's on the outskirts of town. It's got a harbor waterfront park within a couple of minutes' walk. Next. Wiscasset, similarly, we've got Route 1 going within a block away. There's green spaces surrounding the library. It's primarily in a residential neighborhood, but it does have the relationship with the downtown area to the open space and access. Next. Where my office is, which is just outside of this diagram, but here's the downtown area, which is split between both sides of the river. There's a lot of parkland surrounding the library site. The Beth Conde Memorial Pathway provides a pedestrian connection to bring people both on foot and bicycle down to the library area. Town Hall and the green space around it is directly across the street. Next. So let's take a look then at Rockport. And looking at the context, we've already identified the need to look at schools, as you can see here off on the left. This is the RES site, and the schools have moved out of the downtown area. They're consolidated schools. There is an open space. I don't know what the future of the ball fields are relative to the RES site. Assume for now that there is an open space that possibly could be integrated into the site if that was selected for this particular location. It's also within an easy walking distance of the harbor front park and the village, which you can see on the right-hand side of the slide. And you can see the park next to the existing library, just to the right. When we look at the context, as Jane talked about, we look at a number of different things. Its relationship to the school, its relationship to circulation patterns. Circulation patterns, of course, have both a positive and problematic issue here. Circulation and Route 1 and Route 90 coming through here are easy access. If you're going to be creating a facility that was primarily automobile-oriented, this is a great site because it does provide an easy way to get to the library. If you're looking at ways to bring people in who are living in the area, those same highways can create a barrier, especially if you're looking at a linkage between the schools and the library. Next, please. Okay, the slide's looking a little bit fuzzy now, but if we look at the village site, we're looking at the existing facility immediately, thank you, immediately adjacent to the park and to the village. We're looking at its relationship to the downtown area. We know that there's conservation land off to the north and to the east, and it's probably within a 10- to 15-minute walk to the other site. Let's go up, next slide, please. One thing which we start to look at and we're trying to compare the two is what's the character of the land itself? Looking at the RES site, this is an enlargement of a soils map from the Soil Conservation Service. The SW is the indication of the soil type around the existing, what used to be the elementary school site. And according to the soils classification, this is primarily a Swanville silt loam. The characteristics are that it is poorly drained. The depth-to-water table is between 0 and 12 inches, which means it's not a particularly well-drained site. We've heard that there could be problems here if you were to put a basement, if you're looking at ways to build a structure that didn't have any problems with mold. That would be a concern in looking at how this site might be developed. Just to the north on West Street there, again, that we talked about this before, a large piece of open space, you sort of wonder, "Well, couldn't that be something else that would provide more of a context if this was to be the library site?" But the primary soils over there is a BG, which stands for Biddeford Muckey Pete. And as the name implies, this is a very poorly drained soil type. And the depth-of-water table, according to the documents that we've looked at, is essentially at the surface, at zero. And so this is in all likelihood not ever going to be developed, at least under current regulations. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Going to the other side of the existing library, the soils that are there are what's called a Udon fence. It's an urban land complex. These are characterized as having a depth-of-water table between 2 and 6 feet, so water should not be an issue. It's labeled as a moderately well-drained soil. Could I have the next slide, please? We know that there are limitations, but those are fairly easily handled by standard engineering techniques. Could I have the next slide, please? So as a conclusion then, looking at the two sites, here's the Rockport RES site. This is a slide taken from Google Earth Street View several years ago when the school was there. As you can see, the land seems to slope slightly downhill here, which may be part of the problem. The wetland on the other side of the street, as I said before, is not going to be developed at any time in the future. As Jane pointed out, there are very few sidewalks that will connect the site to the downtown area. Can we go to the next slide? So the things we look at here, again, using some of the things that were talked about earlier, does it have high visibility? Well, yes, it does. Someone coming in off of Route 90 or Route 1, it's going to be, it could be in a very highly visible location relative to those two major roads. Is it accessible? Yes, it obviously is. Is there green space? Well, there is right now, but the character of the green space, if it's to remain a ball field, seems to be out of sync with the other towns that we've looked at, which are primarily next to what we might call passive open spaces. Green spaces where people go to relax, to enjoy the beauty of the surrounding, the trees, and so forth. If this was to continue to be used as a major athletic complex, the noise might be in conflict with the function of a library. Does the library serve as a catalyst for the future? In other words, by building a library here, what would that do to other development possibilities along West Street? Could it be the catalyst for something else? Could you see another center of activity here? Well, knowing the type of soils across the street, that's probably not going to happen. We do know, of course, that there are things that have been discussed in terms of workforce housing and daycare centers and so forth along Route 1 south of the library site, which may be a consideration in terms of how this may fit into a larger pattern development in this area. But the other question I think that has to be raised is what is the effect of putting the library here on the downtown area? Knowing that the library itself right now, as somebody said, is part of the cultural center of Rockport. And by removing that outside of the town, that certainly would have an impact on the way that the downtown, the village, functions. Obviously, one of the advantages of the sites is parking. I don't think that parking would be an issue here at all. Let's go to the next slide and take the same look at the Rockport Village site. Again, this is a photograph that was taken from Street View a couple of years ago, and it shows both the existing library and the site at Three Lime Rock up the street. You can see the park next door, and you can see the circulation that certainly probably needs to be addressed if this was to be the site that was to be evaluated. Next slide. And this is the final slide that we have, going through the same type of evaluation. Visibility. Well, it certainly is a highly visible location. It's a terminated vista when you're driving on the street, past the Opera House. That's what you see at the top of the hill there. There needs to be, in my professional opinion, something which terminates the vista, that makes this a whole. If the library was not there, you sort of have to ask the question, "What else would be there that had that degree of prominence?" Is it accessible? Well, people get there right now. It's certainly easily accessible by people within that large circle, that walking distance circle. Green space, as I mentioned before, there is a beautiful park next door that seems to complement the library. People could come downtown to the village and do multiple things. They could go to the library, they could relax in the park, they could go shopping in some of the shops down here, walk down to the harbor, and so forth. You may not have that same variety of opportunity in the other site. Does this provide the catalyst for the future? Well, the downtown area is pretty well-built out, although, as Jane mentioned, there's a lot of tooth-out opportunities here. It's interesting to imagine what might happen across the street now that the art gallery is no longer there. The effect on downtown, just like the other slide, I think is going to have a very positive effect on downtown, making sure that the library stays downtown, it's part of that cultural core that Rockport is known for. Parking, as we heard before, there is now, if the Select Board was to select the land next door at number three, that could conceivably be used for parking. Although I am very sympathetic to people's concern for the loss of some of the beautiful buildings that make up the historic texture and fabric of the community. I don't think that it should be a foregone conclusion that that building would be taken down. I think there's other options that could be looked at. And when we did our initial site plan as part of the proposal, we did look at ways to provide more parking on-street in the area. So I think that parking is certainly a decision that needs to be evaluated in terms of what's available right now, walking distances, and when and how do you provide handicap accessibility, the effect of additional parking on the park. There's a lot of interconnected issues that need to be looked at, rather than simply say, "We're going to buy a building and tear it down for parking." So that in a nutshell is how I look at the situation from our perspective as landscape architects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. What I think makes sense is for us and then the audience to ask questions, but I think also Jamie should jump in on the answers to the questions, Professor, hang on. You should, without, I mean, prior to doing your proposal, which seems, I mean, your notes seems a little backwards, but jump in on the answers to. Jamie might be in a unique position to sort of wrap it all up as it pertains specifically to Rockport, since that's his job. But before we lose Terry, we want to keep him on for questions, and Jane, and also...
I have another half an hour, so I'll stick around.
Of straight talking or of availability?
I'll be here available until 3 o'clock.
Okay.
So why don't you go with Jamie right now?
All right, Jamie, you want to jump in and then we'll have questions for everybody?
I'm ready. I do realize that I've gathered some local knowledge in a few years. I'm very diligent about picking up my history lessons from people who will offer them. And I do think it's important to add a little bit of that detail to what we've heard so far. For example, the basic point where I would start is the same as everyone who's spoken so far, and Terry called it catalyst for the future. The question to me is, "Where are you going to put this public dollar?" And you're going to put it somewhere where it has the best chance of enhancing private investment. And in my view, you could make a risky bet that a relatively undeveloped location, Terry has called it a relatively undevelopable location, that that might experience a boost in assessed value if the right investment of public assets was made there. But the public schools, which are marooned out on Route 90, are a testament to the danger of this way of thinking. Schools and village centers are much harder to build or renovate, and this practical truth, along with state and federal incentives, have led many, many communities to abandon existing school sites and village centers. I don't see what, if any, private investment was spurred by the huge investment of the elementary school and high school out on Route 90. Obviously, these are some great schools we're talking about. My wife and I are not alone in bringing a small family, growing family, to town for the comparative quality of this school district. We moved from Belfast, not from far away, but very deliberately had our eye on the school system. So I'm not saying these schools have not brought a return on investment. However, the location has not benefited any of the towns served by the schools. In fact, a gas station and convenience store failed right on Route 90 adjacent to the schools. In my opinion, all of the towns would have been better served by locating the schools in any one of their respective village centers. So the alternative to, "If you build it, they will come," is pretty simple. You put the public dollar where already high-established assessed value can be found, and you bet on growing it further. Even if your goal is relatively modest and you want to shore up a weakness in the immediate community, in the vicinity of the Harbor Village, you have these two anchor tenants that are in play, CMCA Museum and the library. I think you would be secure in betting on a significant net increase in assessed value over time compared to putting that dollar somewhere else, opportunity cost included. And I appreciate that Terry and others have touched on that, and Kerry can bring the analysis and expertise to not just assessed value, but the logic of opportunity cost. So to repeat, locating a new public library in the downtown is a low-risk... So, to repeat, locating a new public library in the downtown is a low-risk, high-reward proposition. Still, it is perfectly natural that not all Rockport residents see this question in the same simple terms. And I'm very aware that, to many people, our profession has this touchy-feely aspect or is very folksy. It's difficult to quantify success in planning and to implement decisions without regrets somewhere in the community. So, what I hope to do, and I have three points that I'll make sure we hit on during discussion later, is to make sure that the common sense test is passed and that we're not basing this on an artistic or touchy-feely sense of where things ought to be. And I think we can achieve that and still support my conclusion. I'm happy to offer you my conclusion that the, a location in a village center is far superior to the RES site for any public investment.
All right. We will now go to our questions.
Yeah.
Who wants to start?
My first one is just a real quick one. Your third or fourth image showed looking down Main Street. And you said there was what you called tooth gaps. Is that the harbor side or is that the north side? Or, I mean, like, as a planner, what would you like to see that look like?
So, it definitely is evident on the harbor side. On the opposite side of the road, there's a hill, a slope. So, that doesn't feel as noticeable.
You'd like to try that? We're going to put a map up. And Terry, if you could switch this monitor back to number one. Thanks.
As I noted earlier, planners often talk about the outdoor space, the public space between the walls of the, the front walls of the building, the road in between, which is a sidewalk, spaces for people, spaces for parking, spaces for people and vehicles. So, the more attention that you can spend on that public space and creating that as a safe, comfortable place for people, the bigger your investment is. The more your investment pays off. So, the missing teeth are the obvious ones in, you know, that buildings that were just taken down next to 21 Central and north of that. But, you know, and that happens in a lot of downtowns. In the olden days, it happened, you know, with urban renewal. But now, you know, we're so much more careful. And that's, you know, but you have missing teeth in your village center.
How do you, as a planner, balance out, in very particularly going down that street in Rockport, a view shed of the water versus the experience of, and you said, rather than one monolithic building, smaller entrances and everything all are conducive to that feel for downtown. But yet, we have this huge, you know, magnet that I want to look at the sea.
So, many communities, and I know Camden's in particular, the planning community and the leaders of the community went to great lengths to protect view sheds. So, even though there's a wall of buildings, there's a gap between buildings that draws you down with a public corridor to that place. And enhancing that public corridor, enhancing that view, making sure people see where they might want to walk, and it draws people more than that quarter of a mile or half of a mile typical walk.
So, that could extend the allowable sense of downtown?
Absolutely.
I'd definitely like to expand on that. You have Terry at 10 minutes and Jane at five minutes. And what I would add to that is there's a certain, almost capillary action that you're hoping for if you have a narrow intimate streetscape that draws people along and there's enough variation in storefronts to sort of keep them moving. And if there is, if there are barriers along the path when you establish this radius, I would suggest that the precautionary principle, and with local knowledge of Rockport, is that rather than 10 minutes or five minutes, if it's not within view from where you're standing, I don't think it's walkable in Rockport. There are terminated vistas, as Terry suggested, which are destinations. But often in Rockport, the terminated vista is some kind of dead end visually. There's a bridge, there's a hill that's so steep looking down Main Street that you don't know if you can negotiate it. So, it's important that the radius be considered small, as small as possible. And then you look inside there, as Terry and Jane have done, and say, where in Rockport is the greatest concentration of assessed value inside that very small radius? So, without question, it is in the, on Central Street, in the Harbor Village. And then you're back to that question, build it and they will come, or try to maximize existing strengths?
So, help me out just for a second. You say, put your public daughter, daughter, dollar, where the highest assessed value is?
No, where the best delta, the best change in assessed value can be anticipated. And that takes in some of the logic of opportunity cost. If you put the library in one place and the other one suffers, you've robbed from Peter to pay Paul. The overall change in assessed value is what you'd be looking for. And one reason I put this new zoning map on the screen, apologies to you, Terry, exploring a corner of the website that I have not updated. But in 2016, the voters approved by a five-to-one margin, not one of these close votes that we've had on library locations, greatly expanding the development potential in the, in the middle of that downtown area. Those are not seven parcels. I've identified those as sort of seven sites that are known and have relative development potential. And this map is just an illustration that went into DEP for their approval of the zoning amendment. So, in this core area, there are zero setbacks and a 50-foot maximum height and a number of other dimensional standards that have been relaxed. So, even where you see a tooth, and not one that has been punched out over the years, there is development potential that can be expanded. And so, this would be very complex to try and include that in an analysis of development potential, as Kerry has done. So, you know, he's, by definition, had to keep it abstract. But that's worth keeping in mind because you have added development potential. You could say restored a traditional type of development potential when you look at a four-story hotel that once sat at One Lime Rock Street.
If I could also add, and I think we're all saying this, that there's synergy that is created by putting the library or keeping the library in the village center because you have all these other activities that are happening. And then if somebody goes to the library, they may just stay and walk to the park. And then they might be able to walk along the front of the buildings and then see Harbor Park and go down the bridge across the way, and they're staying longer. And they're experiencing Rockport as a bigger place. Project for Public Spaces talks about the power of 10, and I've talked about this, I think, with you before. But, you know, how do we create great places? And we make sure that there are 10 things to do at every place in Rockport. So, when you say the village is a place, what are the 10 things that we can do to make it the most vibrant possible place and therefore the most economically successful place?
Ken?
I want to apologize in advance because I'm going to ramble a little bit here and ask all three of you, Jamie and Jane and Terry, to comment afterwards. I think it was Jane who had the 10-minute circles, or was it Terry? I can't remember. But at any rate, the conclusion was that the two sites were within about a 10, maybe 11-minute walk of each other. Rockport's downtown village, as it's defined on this map, is very small. If we looked at the map of Rockland that was put up, and again, I apologize, I don't remember who did it, but you could overlay Rockland's downtown and it would reach from, it would cover both sites. There was a photograph presented of the RES site, and the comment was made, I think it was by Terry, that there didn't appear to be any sidewalks. That is changing. There are, there is sidewalk access from the current RES site to, all the way to the downtown. And in fact, the town is making an investment in enhancing the sidewalks along Pascal Avenue with rebuilding the picturesque High sidewalk. A new sidewalk connection was built to the Route 1, Route 90 intersection. A signalized pedestrian crossing will be going in there within the next year or so. So, there is perhaps a bit more pedestrian access to that site than was noted. I guess my question, and more a request for comment, I guess, more than anything. And I appreciate Jamie's comment about the schools being marooned out on Route 90. I would suggest that perhaps the RES site isn't quite so far marooned. You know, maybe Gilligan would get back a little bit sooner from that site, I'm not sure. But I guess my request for comment is, if we were to choose the RES site, given that we are working on the pedestrian access of that site, in fact, improvements have already been made from the slides that were shown, would that have an enhancing development potential for perhaps expanding our village area and covering that entire area between the two sites and perhaps advancing development potential along Pascal Avenue and along there? And I just, so I'm asking, I'm not asking the question with a, you know, a view toward one site or another, but I just would like to ask the development professionals to perhaps comment on that. Is there a possibility that choosing that site could produce, and I think it was Terry's words, the catalyst for future development along there, given, even given the wetland across the streets? Through rambling, I'll ask everybody to comment.
So, I, my comment is, building a sidewalk doesn't mean you will have pedestrians there. There have been sidewalks in the middle of nowhere that nobody uses. The reason people use a sidewalk is that they have places to go to and from. And the distance between those places is important. And the activities and spots, things to see and do along the way, those things are important. And the reason that we walk from doorway to doorway in a village center is because we want to see what's in that next doorway. And the reason businesses have low windows is because you want to, it's that visibility piece. You want to see what's in that next door window, so you keep on walking. Malls have figured this out perfectly, based on old downtowns, because people keep walking and walking and walking to see what's next. Building a sidewalk that's a half a mile long from RES site to the village isn't necessarily going to produce people walking to get from one place to another. You may have some people that will do that, that live in the village center and say, I'm going to walk to RES today. My prediction is, most likely, you will have mostly, mostly everybody using that library site will be by car. They will drive to the library, they might walk across the street to the McGunta Cook Market. They might walk to...
Market Basket.
Market Basket, excuse me, Market Basket, sorry. Market Basket. And they might walk down the street to, you know, if they live, one of those, one of the residential houses towards the water, they might walk down to Rare. But, I mean, that distance, there has to be things, places to stop along the way.
And I guess that's my question, is would the development of the library there promote more development of places along the way?
It depends. I mean, it depends on zoning, it depends on the market. And I've read the newspaper that there's other development being proposed south of this. So, you know, maybe. But again, your biggest tax benefit is your commercial base, your compact commercial base.
Could I join in here?
Please.
Okay. Again, getting back to this notion of creating a community, when people go to places, they look for spaces. And at the RES site, yes, you have a large open space. You could do just about anything there. But what you're ending up with, though, is a single-loaded road situation where you have the focal point on one side of the road, nothing on the other side. When you go to a downtown, typical downtown areas, you have the ability to go across the street, to look what's happening on the other side of the street, go to crosswalks, peer in windows. You wouldn't have that same richness of experience that you have in the downtown area. It's a fairly limited site from that respect. And I totally agree with Jane that one of the reasons that the downtown area is so inviting is that there are so many things to do along the way. I don't think that you had that same opportunity, at least the way the surrounding area is developed right now. It's a relatively isolated site that's surrounded by residential properties.
I could also address the, what I think is the awesome development potential of the RES site. And I'm pleased that we're ahead of it in terms of contributing off-site pedestrian linkages and, you know, adjacent infrastructure. But with a signalized intersection on Route 1, it's the question of what type of development would be appropriate to the RES site. And in my notes, I provided a more of a scenario where the Select Board could get into a contract zoning situation and bring to that site an employer of a certain size who's committed to keeping a ball field and connecting the pedestrian and pathways, improvements that are sort of in the air and proposed lately. But the, I think it would be a mistake, far from a catalyst for the future, a mistake to paint ourselves into the corner ahead of time with a building on that site. And then what type of building? I don't believe that the type of development, large commercial development that is appropriate to a signalized intersection on the Route 1 would be drawn in by a library any more than they would be by the infrastructure stuff that we're already working on. The fact that it's a very developable site, Terry's pointed out, that it's not surrounded by developable land. But if it were some kind of campus that looked good to Rockporters and kind of owned a place on Route 1 that, where the buildings were moved over onto the Route 1 frontage, I think the development potential is fantastic there. I wouldn't want to hem ourselves, paint ourselves in with a library first.
Brendan, before, Jeff, I know, wants to ask a question. Would you have something if you haven't had a chance?
Yeah. I feel obligated to raise a question that I've heard from some members of the community. And this, it's perfectly fine for you to say, there's no constructive endpoint to this conversation. But I haven't heard anyone speak about social justice at all with regard to citing public spaces. And what I mean by that is the extent to which we concentrate opportunity and resources where those things are already concentrated. The users of the library are varied. And I'm mindful of what you're saying about the walkability of one site, the potential walkability of another site. There's definitely some portion, a significant portion, I think, of the users that are driving, no matter where we put the library. Does that element come into play with your considerations about planning? And if it does, how should it come into play with this particular conversation?
It's a very difficult issue. The, in my work at Presque Isle City Hall, where I was for four years and started a downtown revitalization program, you might remember, Jane, when they invented the Main Street program kind of light, where, of course, you don't have a full-time executive director. Yeah, the Main Street network thing, it was us and Norway that made that happen. And the message was kind of new, that development potential downtown requires some special attention and that it can be done so that downtown is pulling its weight for the whole community. And that's why I boil down my analysis to something as abstract as assessed value because the, you know, the question I would have for you, Brendan, bringing that issue up is the, what if we had unanticipated success? If we just, if it was so great at the RES site that all this development was attracted and it kind of turned into its own new village center that was totally accessible because it's on Route 1? Then you'd have in Rockport, basically, there used to be five village centers, and they're endangered species now. What would you have done to the strongest one that the town has left? This is an important, high-performing earner for the whole community that is the downtown. And the other liabilities that come with building a long frontage on Route 1, I want to save for later since you're asking a social justice question. And the way I put it, I always go to Steve Beveridge for my history lessons. And we spoke about, what if, Kerry, forgive me, but we used you as an example, Kerry's digging in his backyard and he finds gold.
Thank you.
And he goes after it a little more and it really gets out of hand, and he's going to open a gold mine. And then, Mount Pleasant Road needs some improvements, some bridges around there are going to need a big investment. And we will... a big investment, and we will probably offer some zoning changes just to make sure that the jobs associated with the mine and the revenue that is a gold mine is supported by public investment. And then if you had someone in another part of town who said, you know, it's been years since I've been in that mine, I never go to that mine, that mine does nothing for me, are you saying that you want to impede the revenue generators who do use the gold mine? Jane called it a golden goose, but the downtown is a gold mine that needs some special reinforcement with public assets for the benefit of the whole community?
Yeah, social justice is a difficult issue to address, and planners are asked to, and community members are asked to address it all the time. Often in our villages, we talk about it as accessibility, walkability, the availability of public spaces that are available to everyone. We talk about affordability, housing affordability, and we all know in the midcoast, that's harder and harder these days. So, you know, it's, it's always a concern, you know, and I still think that if you want to put your public dollars and invest them wisely, your best investment is where you get the most bang for the buck, and that's in your centers.
Terry, do you want to chime in on this?
I don't know if we have it. I think another aspect of it is transportation and what's going to be the site that's going to be most accessible to people. And I know the, the RES site might be a little bit closer to West Rockport. The question that I would ask is, how much additional travel time does it take to get from that site over the existing library site? It may be a matter of, matter of another couple of minutes. To me, that is not a huge burden to bear in terms of providing something which is going to have so much benefit to the downtown area. Coupled with that, of course, is the discussion about what do you do with the RES site and is there a way to do something that would provide workforce housing or other amenities or other facilities that the town sorely needs in proximity to the downtown area? So it's, it's a very complex discussion that needs to be engaged in and looking at how you dispose of each of these sites.
So I have a quick question, I think mostly for Terry, but you guys can join in as well. Specifically germane to Rockport, Terry, you had two circles with their epicenters being, one in RES and one at Lime Rock. And you said, more or less, it looks like approximately the same amount of dwellings, buildings inside of each, each circle. My question is, very specific to Rockport, there is, for instance, in my neck of the woods down School Street, there is a really incredible neighborhood that's built up with, you know, 25, 30 kids, which are six blocks from the RES site. Does one make a decision based on the current use? And that, like 10 years ago, it was, it was a little more, not as exciting, my wonderful neighborhood. But do we give extra credit to that sort of phenomena? Or do we say, buildings, buildings, we don't know how it's going to change, we don't know if suddenly a whole flock of young people are going to come into the village where predominantly, I might be safe to say, older people are living in, closer to Lime, Lime Rock. How do we handle that sort of question?
Maybe you do it the same way you look at the Safe Roots to School program. You look at where do people live right now, where do the school population are concentrated? How do you get from the population centers to the schools or the library? Are there problems along the way? Are there things that can be done to improve the safety, the visibility, the facilities that we have to get people there and to encourage more people to walk or to ride their bicycles?
Also, neighborhoods go through cycles, and people own their homes and then they grow out of their homes for whatever reasons, and hopefully new young families come in and occupy those places. We see in the midcoast what I call the dark door syndrome from October 15th to April or May or June, and I think we have to be really, really careful of that.
The harbor too, yeah.
Yeah.
It's dark.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I think some neighborhoods are especially, you know, around here, we're starting to see new young families moving back in for, I don't know what reason, but thank goodness, and they're year-round people. And I think that we need to provide for that as much as possible and, but I don't know, you know, I just, I mean, I'd echo Terry's answer, you know.
I would also add the, it's important that we acknowledge from a social justice perspective or otherwise, the, the counterargument that you must have heard as elected officials and I hear every day in the office, to, forgive me, guys, but someone from out of town saying, I encourage you to walk, I encourage you to bike. I walk to work every day, I'm a believer. Not every day. Bad weather.
You ride your bike.
I, yeah. But that doesn't mean that most people in Rockport see the world that way. Rockport is a very suburban community, a lot of people see the world from the end of their cul-de-sac, and they, they have that question, what does the investment in downtown do for me? And they also say, when I point out something about the walkable radius or what draws people along in the downtown, I have almost the same definition of Jane of what's a downtown. Downtown, you get there in your car, you accomplish your objective. Let's say you, you drop off a book. But before you get back in your car, some other thing occurs to you to do. And you're going to hear in Rockport, I'm not that somebody, I'm on my feet plenty at work all day, thank you. And so it's really important to be aware of that and to take seriously opportunities to improve parking at a downtown location. You know, that issue can't go away and it's, it's reflected in every vote on the subject.
Real quickly, I think if Terry's still on, I think he has to do a three o'clock call. Thank you very much for your help in all this, and
I'm going to check out. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being flexible with the schedule, too. Much appreciated.
Bye-bye.
Just, could I, just, it wasn't me.
He disappeared.
Quick comment on parking. Many communities, many planning boards, even in new developments, might approve a parking plan but not build it. Not build it until you know you need it. Just like college campuses sometimes don't put in sidewalks until they see the path that is worn. And, and why? Why build it? So why build a parking lot with 50 cars that might cause the problems that we just heard earlier? But know what you might build if you need it later. Maybe it isn't asphalt, maybe it is grass pavers. You know, there's so many ways you can accommodate those kinds of concerns, but don't build it if you don't need it. Why build it?
That's the aspirational part.
Yeah. No, that's a good point, that if we were to look at the Scott property as, as you put, grass pavers as a six-month parking solution, which just doesn't get plowed in the winter. Do we need it down there in the winter, that extra parking? A good question, interesting. Who else?
Professor Shideroff might have a question. Are we entertaining questions on the audience?
No, not professor, not professor. Sometimes a lecturer, an instructor.
A question, yes.
So Richard Shideroff from Five Church Street can practically throw a snowball to the library, even at my age. I have 101 things to say that would take three hours, but I'll make this mercifully brief. Years ago, I proposed that we re-acquire the high school which we live a house away from. David, David Barry is not here this afternoon to back me up or tell me I imagined it. We had a conversation about buy, the two of us, as long as my wife didn't know about it, we would buy Church Street and privatize it. We would put the parking for the library, the core library in the, in the old high school, under the front lawn. So skip that because everyone thinks that that is just too far over the edge or over the horizon, however you want to visualize it. With regard to the commons, the memorial park, by my very crude calculations, all in my head, five, six, seven years ago, I proved to myself that there was room for 40 standard-sized American and foreign vehicles not to exceed a height of seven feet, two inches to seven feet, eight inches, which I think is a standard parking lot clearance for insurance reasons and so forth, and that the drainage under the common would be a little bit better than it is under the, the one Lime Rock Street address because its elevation is slightly more by about a meter on average. And that you should consider, when you start talking about green parking, to just simply put space for those 40 cars under the common. A common, a piece of flat terrain like that can be surgically removed, as they say in certain trades. It can be excavated, it can be capped with pre-stressed concrete roofing at gray, at original grade level, and the entire common, even with accommodation for trees and root systems, you can bring in and install with a crane. To some people, that would be like an overnight miracle, but it's done everywhere where a community or an institution has the wherewithal, mostly the financial wherewithal, and you could reproduce the common pretty, pretty close to original specs on top of such an underground parking facility. And that would not have to be plowed, so Steve would be very happy about that. And I do suggest, before I shut myself off, that you reconsider re- acquiring a high school and putting the parking under the front lawn, and not tell my wife that David and I had been scheming about buying Church Street. And the only parking we would allow on Church Street would be for elderly library patrons.
Thanks. Now, do we want to open this up for general comment and question?
We haven't in the other meetings.
I know we have a
One more on my list, anyway.
Yeah, well, I, I thought this would be question rather than
We said we would accept written questions, and if anybody has any, then
I, I think, I think people have questions of the people that are here, that would be a good thing to entertain.
Have them write them out?
Write them out or come up, I mean, we're late in the day, they can come right up, but
It worked fine earlier, people came and asked questions, so
Yeah, so that's
So questions rather than statements.
Pat's first, I think.
Pat's first.
If we get back there, Jeff, I have one more bullet on what it means to invest in Route 1, that hopefully will be useful, but
Okay, yeah, no, we'll close up with that, so
And then we'll go to Pat.
Uh, Jane.
Oh, we'll do Pat now, okay.
Editorial comments should be posed as questions, remember.
This is actually a question.
All right.
But it does sort of build on what Brendan asked about, you know, kind of fairness aspect of, we're building a municipal facility for the town of Rockport. We know we have five different villages, and today, most of the concern has been how to take care of the little, you know, it's about three or four street section that is called the downtown part of Harbor Village. I would be interested to know, here's the question part, and I think you can do it because you all have these fine maps, you know, with circles and stuff. What, what is the population? How many houses are in the so-called downtown section? And I'm using that term to mean people can walk in five or 10 minutes to the library without any stress, given physical handicaps, versus how many houses, how many people live in the rest of Rockport? My sense of Rockport is it's a very large town. It's comprised of five villages, it's comprised of a lot of open space, but there are a lot of people. What is the, what is the ratio between building a library that's for the convenience of how many people versus how many other people that just by virtue of the fact they live where they live, they have to drive? And they don't all come at the same time, sometimes they do, and that's when troubles exist. So what is that ratio? And that might help drive us into being sure that we're really thinking about the well-being of Rockport as a town rather than just as a neighborhood. And I also want to comment on something Jane said, which was that neighborhoods change over time. And I couldn't agree more, because when I came here, downtown Harbor Village consisted of where the elementary school was, it went all the way up to, you know, where Stuart has just bought Hoboken Gardens, it was that entire area, and it, it functioned that way. People walked or drove to various parts of, you know, they might be going out for dinner, they might be going to the library, they might be going to the school, they might be going to Ingraham Store, and that's the way it was. And that was only, well, 30 years ago. But it, you know, it could change again.
So I, I think it would be quite easy for your planner to find out how many houses are within the radius of the village versus the rest of the community, and most likely the numbers will be skewed. I hope the point we all made is that your major factor, the major decision maker, making factor should not be convenience. It absolutely should not be convenience of getting to and from that library. If that's the factor, then all of our cities and towns should have been strip developments. And I would suggest you'll lose the character of your community if you start making your decisions based on that. It's, that's a long range, a long-term investment decision that is a poor decision.
Rockport can't afford it. I mean, to pursue this myth of convenience and build a million more high schools and elementary schools next to nothing because it sure is easy to pull in there would be social justice kind of run amok, you know? I mean, the, the same taxpayers who have that, that concern for social justice need the revenue that, that would be, you know, slowly leaking out every time a decision like that is, is made.
If you want another resource, look at the Strong Towns website, strongtowns.org. They talk about the Ponzi scheme of development. And a lot of communities believe that we can build our way to prosperity by new development, new development, new development, new road, new road, new road. And his point, Chuck Marone, who started the organization, says that every new road is a liability, it is not an asset. It is a long time, long-term liability. And when you start thinking of new development that way, that the public pieces of that are a long-term liability, it's costing you more and more to maintain that sprawl. So, just food for thought.
Well, here I am with the counterargument, as I'm sure you would expect.
Counterquestion.
Counterquestion. Because everyone talks about the downtown, and I think, Ken, you brought this up, that it's really a limited two-block section of what we consider downtown, if you want to think of that inner village commercial space I'm talking about. And the current inhabitants of those buildings are an expensive, two expensive restaurants, the main media workshops, which is terrific that they're there, and Bay Chamber. So it's not like there's a lot of storefront going along that two-block section that brings people wanting to walk that section. You know, those of us who do live outside the inner village come to walk at the harbor, we might, might stroll from there to the library, but more likely not because we'd stop at the library on the way to the post office or vice versa. Anyway, when I hear Terry and Jane and Jamie all talk about losing the heart of our downtown, I'm thinking, we're not going to lose that. We want those tenants there, that does create something, but I strongly believe, what I've heard from many people, that it used to be downtown was thought of from the corner where RES is, right to Ingraham Store, right across the bridge, and then that two-block section. And I don't see, to me, that's not sprawl, that's not inventing new roads, that's not in any way creating a monster. It's in fact really getting something that could be very exciting for our town. And a couple of your illustrations, Jane, really showed what could happen on a property like that. My other question is, who asked Kerry to do a build-out of workforce housing on that RES site? I'm curious. Did the select board ask him?
I asked
You personally asked him to do it?
I didn't personally ask him, I asked the town manager.
To have a build-out analysis done.
The reason I'm, the reason I'm bringing that up as a question is because, again, number one, we know about what Smiths and Taylor and Martha are considering that would include potentially workforce housing along the properties that they're purchasing or have purchased. And I think of that RES And I think of that RES site as being such a magnificent site for the town that to think of having it exclusively workforce housing with a professional building or two on it, it seems like it's a demeaning use of that space. And I don't mean that workforce housing is demeaning. I just think that there are other places that workforce housing could be built, other than on that spectacular site that really should be to the advantage of the community. It also, yes, it has some wet spots, but we all heard the other day from engineers and builders that they could handle that. And it has the opportunity to have some parkland space around it. So I just want to bring those back up.
So pretending that was a question, how do you guys respond to that?
I would love to address both of those questions. Ingraham Store and I think a pizzeria, right? Both failed next to a public school. So we've tried that. It's very important to consider that. Now, there are many people here with a better sense of the history of Rockport and what might have been, but the facts on the ground are, those businesses left. Why did they do that? And then...
Why aren't they in the downtown? Why aren't they in the two blocks?
Well, I'm...
Well, if...
The downtown is...
Specific to those two buildings, people retired and died.
Well, that happens everywhere. And in Prescott Island, everywhere, you hear the owner say, well, no one could ever do what I do. But the point is, a successful business can be purchased and handed off.
Excuse me a second here. And what happened when Guido's moved out of town, up on Route 90? They couldn't make it. As popular as they were, as much as everybody liked their pizza and everything, it failed when it moved up to Route 90, out of downtown.
So the other point that this question raises, and it's a bigger question, is, you know, why didn't those family-friendly, affordable places pop up in downtown? This is a huge weakness for the downtown. This is a hump that the downtown needs to get over to be a better servant of the community. And, you know, that's one of the reasons why public investment is called for there. But the other issue is, I couldn't agree more that this is a magnificent site. And I would hope that through contract zoning and other relatively heavy-handed stuff, considering Rockport's politics, would get a result such as the Front Street Shipyard. I was working at Belfast City Hall as an assistant planner when the contract zoning was negotiated with, Taylor Allen, I'm sure is listening. The town owned some land. There was a lot of land swaps, but primarily what happened is the town relaxed some zoning and made greater development potential that was a better fit for a particular partner who was already known. And what the town, what the city got in exchange was a busy shipyard burdened by public amenities that no one would ever want in their business plan. This harbor walk that goes right across the Wash Basins and under the travel lift. And nobody would design a site and say, I need this problem on my hands to be in business in Belfast. But the reason it worked is that there was enough give and take through the process of a land use decision that everyone is proud of. And similarly, at the RES site, the connections to the other properties, Hoboken Gardens, other pathways that are being talked about, very preliminary ideas, but the buyer and the developer of that site, having first passed through, you know, an intense dating game with the town in being selected, would have to put in enough of a commitment that the town felt safe working with that person and that there was enough clawbacks that if the jobs were not created or if the right partner wasn't there, the deal wouldn't go forward. So that magnificent site hopefully will not be sort of colored in in the same pattern that an assessor has to use in order to create serviceable data. But some exceptional product of zoning and planning in collaboration with the town should be developed there. Not just the paths, but the ball fields. There's some assets there that the town wants preserved. We've heard that.
We have a question from the press, perhaps?
Well, from a resident.
Yep.
Resident.
Resident and press. I'll put on the resident hat first, and I'll say, I think you guys are actually grappling with what back in 2004 was, how did Rockport grow? And it's landed in your laps and has the library. But that's not my question. My question is, and this is very practical, the soil. And what's, Terry, I think, had mentioned it's Swanville or Biddeford, and it's not great, not great drainage, but then I think you were doing analysis on workforce housing. And then, Jamie, you mentioned it's great for commercial. So what's the bottom line on the soil there?
I think we heard, and if I can jump in, when we had our construction and engineers meeting the other night, that basically what we heard from those professionals was that they could handle it. Yes, there is an issue there, but there are mitigations that could be done, and they could handle it. Would not hinder development of the site, if correct.
Yeah, I would go a step further. I can't remember exactly the way that I asked, but I asked them to compare it to, you know, running into ledge on another site. Was it comparable to that? And what we heard was basically, there's nothing that they see that would cause you to, there's nothing they see on that site, although it is wet, to cause you to choose a different site on account of the soil.
For a public institution.
Yeah. I mean, and Jeff, you and I, we also heard that, you know, much of the high school was constructed on pretty wet property.
It is, forest and wetlands.
So, you know, that has not been just the wetness of that site, you know, similar mitigation efforts, but it can be done successfully. And, you know, those are qualified professionals that said, don't let that scare you.
And to build on that a little bit more is that they pointed out that technology, that great god of technology, they are building better buildings these days that take that into account and that the site, the wetness of the site, did ultimately cause the mold, et cetera, et cetera. But that while that was an issue for that building, the way it was executed, one would not do that these days. So, you know, and we, to be sure, the challenge was compare the two sites. And with respect to site prep and anything inherent with the site, it basically came out of wash.
I think that, I do think there was a perception that at least some portion of this board may have been looking for an easy out, and it's not there. You know, that's not an easy out.
And then underneath the current, the existing site, is it ledge there?
So we have some borings, and they know where the ledge lines are, but are not...
Lime Rock, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what you meant by existing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would stop shy of saying that we have everything we need to know.
We were only able to get, I think, two or three test borings on that site. We did test borings on both the Memorial Park site and on the library, current one Lime Rock Street site. Surprisingly, ledge refusal is much shallower on the Lime Rocks, I mean, Memorial Park site than it is on the current site. That said, we weren't able to do borings under the building. You know, we don't, we just did borings around the building, so...
Well, we do know that in the parts of the building, it sits right on ledge.
Yes. Yep, there are parts. I mean...
The parts we can access.
I think the bottom line is, both sites have some problems, both sides have some advantages, you know, for construction.
Purely from soil.
From soil.
Yeah, okay.
But they're both mitigatable.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And Brendan, I think Carnegie would be very proud of you for bringing up social justice.
So, one thing that we need to, you know, just to continue this soil, we did learn today that the area north of West Street, across from RES, really probably will never be developed.
Oh, we do that.
Well, you'd be surprised how much they build on stilts down south, you know?
Well, I think we heard...
They don't have any wetland protection.
I think what we heard today was that development is not likely in the near-to-medium-term future. Who knows many years down? New, you know, possibilities technologically could come up, but it's not going to happen next week.
Nope.
As we draw this to a close, I do...
Still have another one that wants to make a question.
Yeah, but I don't have to listen to her, you do. Please. I didn't see you hiding behind Kerry.
Hiding behind Kerry.
There was a lot of talk from Jane and from Terry about downtowns, and you can have both sides, and you can walk, and you see lots of things. There's nothing in downtown Rockport. It's all one-sided.
Your question?
Well, I'm just wondering, why are we talking about all the things you can do in downtown Rockport, and there's nothing there? There's no...
There's a very nice little bookstore right across.
And Helen, you go around the corner onto Main Street, and you got four shops along through there, along with Peter Alston's Gallery.
They're all closed. I always look in Peter's window. I love Peter's window. But what I'm saying is, Jane showed a beautiful picture of almost exactly what RES Redevelopment Committee talked about five years ago, with multi-story buildings, a library on the ground floor, shops on the ground floor, workforce housing up above. And why is that being ignored, simply because you can't build across the street? There's no across-the-street downtown, so...
So, every main downtown or village center has struggles. And a lot of it started 30, 40, 50, 60 years ago with more and more malls and the automobile and what have you. And there are missing teeth in many towns, and there are challenges due to topography and other things like you have here. I think that the whole point of my presentation at least was that there is so much more potential there. Not only are you getting the greater tax revenues per acre than in other parts of town, but the potential to make it a stronger center is enhanced by putting public facilities there also. So there should be a coffee shop there. There should be a great bookstore if there isn't already. There should be a flower shop. There should be X, Y, and Z. They should be there. And how can you lay the groundwork for those additional things to happen there so that the potential is there? The picture I showed of that multi-town, multi-floor building was to say, if you do RES, if you choose that, please don't make it a single library in the middle of a lot. That is a total waste of land, of money, of potential. And if you can, if you do choose that site, I don't know whether it's in hand-in-hand with a developer who says, I will lease you the library space, or I will give you the library space in exchange for these multi floors, and you say, we have to have housing, it has to be affordable, X, Y, and Z. And you are partners, much as Jamie said, to make that development. It's, yeah. And that, I mean, that is in Canada. It's new construction. It's multi-story. It has a public street going into it and looping around. There's sidewalks. There's on-street parking. Then you see a woman in a wheelchair, not on the sidewalk. There's street trees. But, you know, that wouldn't be my preference. If I were in your seat, knowing the economic potential, I would put the library in the village. But if you choose to go there, think long-term on how you can, you know, you're building a new village, and you're abandoning another.
That was something we learned a couple of weeks ago when we had the contractors and engineers and architects in, was to make a master plan.
Absolutely.
A comprehensive plan, whatever you want to call it, for the RES site before we...
I wouldn't even do it just for the RES site. I would do it for all four corners of that intersection. That is a major gateway to your community. And with or without the library as an issue, I think as a planning board, your planning board, your comp plan committee, and you folks should be looking at that intersection as, what do we want the development of this intersection to be?
Thanks to Helen, I can add, you know, that I've seen the results of some of that 2012 work where the master planning made some forward movement at RES. And the way I would answer you, Helen, is that you're, this is a bet on which is better, starting from scratch or going with one of your village centers that may be a fixer-upper, but at least it's already established. And so there are, I've seen historical photos also of development on both sides of Central Street, and it can happen again. As a planner, although it might be unwise, I sort of look ahead to the day when the ORC and the select board are proposing rezoning that other side of Central Street, even though it's in the backyards of three or four people who may be real unhappy about it. And that's the moment when the social justice has another side of the coin, where all the residents of Rockport will very handily outvote the few people that don't want to see the second, you know, the other side of Main Street developed. And, you know, eventually, not Main Street, Central Street, eventually, Rockport will achieve that outdoor room or streetscape that helps bring in the middle-of-the-road retail opportunities.
So I want to make sure that as we close this up, that we, if we want to entertain any questions that we haven't asked. I mean, are there questions that we should have asked of you guys and haven't? Or are we exhausted for a reason?
Believe it or not, I have one more.
Yep.
I call this bullet, "Don't bet on Route One." And the, I just want to talk a little bit about the life cycle of growth that is dependent on a highway, a major artery controlled by the state. It's the state of Maine and not Rockport that is counting the cars out there and will eventually make the call, do we need a limited-access highway? Do we need a divided highway where no one can turn left, ever, anywhere? This is something, this is the progression that I grew up with in the state that Maine hopes it will never become, of New Jersey. And so the, with time, Terry mentioned this point also, the highway evolves into a barrier and not a connector. So this is a super decision for many businesses to locate out there and focus on vehicular traffic and the visibility that comes from Route One, but not for those whose business plan depends on pedestrian circulation. And there's just, I can't say enough about being careful what you wish for with respect to development on highways. Every intervention has a lot of costs. It's like back surgery. If you look at Rockland, where the artery was split in two into these two one-way corridors, the hope then was that Union Street would get as much of the commercial growth as Main Street. But that's a speeding-through bypass that has hampered commercial growth and values. I can give you any number of examples of downtowns that were eviscerated by highways. And Rockport, it's a very important characteristic of Rockport, that MDOT's already had its way with us. There are three highways slicing through town, and that's a lot. But we have to choose how we react to that and where the best possible increase in assessed value can be found. And if it can happen in Bath or Damariscotta or even in Rockland, it can happen here.
And Jane, you've worked all around the state. Is there anything you see in the future in terms of what Route One could become or things that are out of our control?
Well, you don't own Route One. It's difficult, not impossible, but it's difficult to control what happens there. You can control your streets. You can control through zoning what happens on each lot. But the cycle, as Jamie says, is, it may have started residential in, you know, 50, 75 years ago, and as traffic increased and the road was widened to accommodate that increase, it became less and less palatable to live there. So then things transitioned to commercial strip development. And then it breeds more traffic, more left turns, all those things. And so you get congestion, and the method of dealing with that kind of traffic congestion, traffic volume has been to try to build your way out of that problem, which now more and more DOTs are saying, we can't do that. So the good news is that state governments are starting to shrink roads a bit... a bit, but in Maine, we don't have money for that. So even though a community might say, please right-size this street, please, please put it on a road diet, that's the terms they use, there's no money to do that. It doesn't mean there won't be someday, but I wouldn't have a whole lot of hope for that now. So it's, you know, I think you control what you can and, you know, be careful about what you put out there on those highways, because you can make the situation worse.
We might have a question from the audience.
Helen, is it, are you, are you saying that there won't be federal assistance in, in, under the new regime or bicycle lanes?
Me?
Yeah, I guess Jane.
So, there, there is bicycle money, there's less, and there's less and less money available for big road reconstruction projects, there's definitely no money for bypasses, so don't expect, you know, your, Rockport Village is bypassed right now. And I've worked with all 21 communities between Brunswick and Bucksport, and over the past 13 or so years. And the towns that are, in my words, the happiest are those that have been bypassed. Originally, they felt the bypass was a jinx, you know, you've, you've taken away the, the cars traveling past our doors, so therefore our businesses will fail. And, and it, it, what's happened instead is downtown Damascada and downtown Belfast are, and downtown Rockport are in a good situation because cars that are there want, want to be there. And you can make your place special, that people want to go there. So those that, those that through traffic is, you know, is hard to deal with. Bicycle, there is money for bicycle and pedestrian routes, there is, but there's not much, and it's statewide, and you're competing against many other communities. So there is some, and there, and there's been federal allocations that, you know, say a cer, that when you do widen roads, you have to accommodate bikes.